All right, it is seven oh one, we will call the meeting to order for the Dayton regular meeting, public hearing for the Titans zoning war appeals. If we could just please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so next we're going to confirm our next meeting date, which is Tuesday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. This is following our regular schedule of the fourth Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to let you guys know that, starting that date, we're going to start meeting at the town hall level conference room.
Is that until, that's our new spot then?
That's our new spot.
Fine by me. All right, so we're going to go to the review, discuss, and act, the first item agenda, Stonegate Landing LLC, Westerly side of Somerset Avenue, map nine, status update of phase one. I'm going to have Greg take the lead on this because he was, he's the point person for the project and there was a working session, obviously he's the only board member that could attend, so I'm going to have Greg just fill everybody in, and then we'll go to Marguerite, and then Veronica, she's here, so we'll go to Greg first.
Yeah, so we had a pretty good meeting with Mr. Fedorov over there in regards to Stonegate Landing, in regards to the questioning of how we're going to get phase one finished up, we started asking questions to him in regards to that. He's pretty much got, I believe, four affordable, four standard, and was it three affordable? Am I correct on that? That's two.
Two.
Left in phase one, and then we were discussing with the monitoring agent from the, yeah, for the housing, and she was saying that she might have potential couple buyers for phase two, if he was interested in selling. He did say that he was interested in, you know, numbers talk, if the number was correct, he would be considering doing something of that nature. He, he has a piece of property that he has, and I believe he said Easton that he's trying to sell, and once that sells, he's willing to pay back the five thousand right away with forty back that the town has already paid. We do know there's additional fees, but at that moment, he said as soon as that sale shall happen, that he's willing to take care of that. Then we were discussing about, like I say, selling phase two, with the understanding that the potential buyer would have to finish phase one, or A, however we want to list it, for the infrastructure. He's not opposed to, like I say, listening to talks with selling.
Selling?
Phase two.
Two, okay. Is that, that's the only thing on the table right now?
Yes, that's pretty much it. He was like, I don't, I'm pretty much done, I'm trying to do the best I can to finish this up.
So he wants to finish one?
He'd like to finish one, but the only way that we, we were trying to discuss is that, the only way that that could possibly be sold, from what I understood was, is that the potential buyer would have to be understanding of the infrastructure of phase one would have to be complete with phase two.
They can't be sold separately?
Correct. Well, I'm not saying, no, no, not sold separately, sold with the understanding that the infrastructure would have to be wrapped up.
So he wants, so he wants to finish the houses for phase one, he wants to sell the houses for phase one, but he doesn't want to be involved in finishing the infrastructure for phase one?
Yes, that's pretty much how it works.
Oh, I see. Go ahead. Is that?
So, so I think there's just a lot on the table around selling that is open for discussion, I don't want to say that it's just simply.
Okay.
That it's only phase two, or, I mean, there's a lot of different ways this could be, this could be resolved, one is to just have Mr. Fedorov be the person finishing phase one, and somebody else taking over phase two, which has been tried before, but it wasn't necessarily with forty B, forty B experienced developers.
Right.
Then another option is for Mr. Fedorov to sell at this stage, and then whoever comes in finishes phase one, whatever is left, and then takes over phase two, and addresses phase two as they believe is appropriate, again, with experienced forty B developers, or it's some sort of other combination, it could be an outright sale, which if that's the case, then the board and other types of approval would be needed, if we're changing what the LLC is, it could be just a merger that occurs sort of behind the LLC there, and so it's new people within the LLC, the zoning boards, comprehensive permit conditions, say that the zoning board needs to approve any contractor changes, so anybody they're using to actually build the houses or the infrastructure would need to come before the zoning board, if you haven't already approved them, to get your approval, if there's new members of the LLC, that information would need to be provided to the board, but there isn't necessarily an approval element involved with that. So I just, there's, we talked about sort of the requirements involved with any type of sale, how things, you know, the ways that things could happen with more zoning board approval, or less zoning board approval, more state approval and paperwork, or less state approval and paperwork, because the goal here is to try to bring in an experienced forty B developer, and also get this completed sooner rather than later. So it's not necessarily about hiding anything, as much as it's about what would the requirements be, what would the steps be, and what, what are different ways that those steps could sort of be streamlined? You know, the town would still be notified, the town would always be aware, but it's more about how can we streamline those steps, so that Mr. Fedorov ends up getting to a point where he's, he's completed what he's comfortable completing, and, and then we bring in someone with experience in the forty B development process to finish the rest of the development, and we get that development completed. And that's really, we're at the beginning phases of those conversations.
Now, I know, I've, I had some correspondence in this early on, and then I stepped back once we knew that Greg was with me the point person, and I knew one of the biggest things that Veronica was looking for was a dollar amount to finish, to finish one. Have we arrived at that, or something close to it?
And it's not really completely possible, because a lot of it depends on time, et cetera, we know that there's four market rate units, there's two affordable units, there's the final pieces of the infrastructure for phase one, there's some other elements that may need to be resolved, either before you start phase two or not, you know, there are open needs, so it's, it's hard to put a per se number on anything, as much as it really is more about making sure that whoever walks in understands what the open issues are. There's an issue around sidewalks, there's an issue around the one-way entrance and the curb cut off of Somerset Avenue, that all needs to be addressed, there's some infrastructure improvements, and we did provide Veronica with the town engineers' most recent evaluation report.
Okay, that's what I'm going to ask you next, okay.
Marguerite, can I, can I ask you, before we even, like you said, there's a lot to consider, but there's also on the table the fact that he owes quite a bit of money to the town, he owes quite a bit of money for reimbursement and fees to refund his, his account with us, number one, I believe the total is probably around twelve or thirteen thousand dollars if we put everything together at this point, and then he also owes back taxes, and we all know that taxes.
We can't get into the back taxes?
Well, let me, let me finish my, let me finish my thought, I know we can't get into the taxes, but he can't build, it's my understanding, unless taxes are paid, so what I'm, I know we're not going to get into, you know, the, the other side of it, but if he can't build until taxes are paid, or until there's something, an agreement made for taxes, but also for the money that he owes back to refund his, his account with us, is there the potential to put a lien on the property that he currently has with the town, because we know the situation, or, I hate to say it, to even put a lien on this, on the potential sale of the property in Easton, so that at least this committee can cover, recover what's, what's owed to refundish, replenish his account?
So the taxes, the back taxes that are owed are already, I assume, to the extent they have the ability to lean them, they would, there's a cease and desist order in place right now, we're trying to work in a way that is cooperative at the moment, we've had one meeting with Richard, we've just started to exchange information, so I'm not at the point where I would recommend to the board that you take more of an adversarial approach, but we've been very clear that these costs that you just described need to be paid, they need to be paid, you know, before any action can be taken on any of these properties in phase, the remaining properties in phase one, because they are subject to the cease and desist order, and, and that all needs to happen, and, you know, the reality is, is that if we find an interested buyer, that makes the conversation very different, but we needed to provide information to even get people, to even learn if there's people who are interested in this.
So that being, I was gonna-
So that's kind of where we're at, we're at the point of trying to work with Richard to see if he's even willing to have those conversations, he's indicated to us that he is, and then trying to get the information for potential buyers, and then sort of begin to hopefully facilitate the conversations at the table between him and potential buyers, while we, you know, we're being very transparent, these are, these are requirements that need to be completed in phase A, this is what phase B looks like, this is the open issues that still haven't been resolved in phase A, and there's still this underlying problem with a homeowners association, that whoever comes in is going to have to be ready to undertake and to resolve, and that's not the town's problem, but it's not something that we want to hide from a potential buyer, we're not looking for somebody else to come in and then just have another developer at this point of just not completing something, we would, are looking to try to find a way to facilitate completion of the development, and at least phase A of the development, and then if possible, with the understanding that phase B is part of this forty B development, it is not something that can be addressed separately, in a different way, it can't be, you know, spun off or sold off from this project, it is part of the entire development.
So that being said, I guess, what's next?
So I would say what's next is that we need to have another meeting with Richard and with Veronica, we need to keep having discussions, and at this stage, you know, this meeting came up, and we had just had one, we started to get some answers to some questions, like, we're really early on, but it's not, it was important that this board know that that's the start of the conversations that we're having, and then we report back in a month, and in the meantime, hopefully some more conversations are occurring, and we hear further, I, it's, I haven't spoken to Veronica since the meeting, so maybe she has more to report since that meeting, I'm happy to hear from her, but, other than that, she might not yet, because we might still just be at the information gathering communication phase.
Okay, so yeah, we can turn, actually turn, that would be a good time to turn it over to Veronica, if she's ready, if she has nothing, that's obviously fine, but the floor is for Veronica.
Sure, thank you, so, and, and as Marguerite said, this is still early on, because I am still looking for another number, the developers, I've been talking with two of them, that at the end of all of this, I want to make sure I present them to you all, but the first question they had is, so how much, so where does the number come from for B, but where's the number for A? And as I understood it, you really need both of them to, if it's being sold, then they both have to go together, and you, you need the information for, for the cost, right? Not just that, I'm going to have to work with you all, because there's still those other issues, you know, this, like you said, curb cuts, sidewalks, I'm sure that the little part, and whatever else comes into play, and then if Richard has, he still owes them their back taxes, we know there's no moving, because a new developer is not going to want to come in, and if they did come in, and, exactly, like, you know, if you're buying a regular property, they'd want to just have to take over the whole thing, and Richard wouldn't have any part of it in any way she performed, and so I still need the numbers for A, so I can let them know, because they asked me, well, how, what is the cost for to complete that, and then the other question was, working with the town, so I did say that, you know, once everyone wants, wants to know who's going to do what, then we'll do the presentation, so they can hear what's going to cost, to handle the other infrastructure, but they still want to know what is there, how much is there, we got B, and then a question with Greg, the number come from, for B?
Okay, so I mean, we-
We had the town engineers go out and give a field analysis of what they needed.
You did?
Uh, we did, of what the town did, go out there and see the infrastructure, see where it needed to be.
Recently?
No, this was the last year.
Oh, that one, okay. But I remember, I asked Marguerite, I asked Carrie that, did we get a cost complete on it?
We didn't get a cost of it completely, we got a cost, all we did is give an analysis of what it required to fix.
Okay.
What needed to be fixed, at that point, Richard said he was going to have someone go out and give him the price to do this. So, that's what we're waiting on, is a field number, but we know it needs to be fixed by the engineer that was submitted to us, they came and represented and presented the entire thing.
So, so then should we, or potentially, I mean, my concern about waiting for Richard to give us a price to complete, is that may take a while, at this point, and unless there's a timeline, and this is a question I would ask to Marguerite and to Veronica both, is at your next meeting with Richard, assuming there'll be one in the next month, is it possible to set a timeline for the different components of this, i.e., you know, the cost, you know, a cost estimate to complete, a cost estimate for other things, you know, the repayment, various things that are involved in this, and put some time so that everybody has to work with, my concern is that we could be looking at this again in the spring.
Right.
And then saying, okay, we, we talked about this in the fall.
So if we're selling this property, it may take that long to make that happen.
That's okay, I'm fine with that, Marguerite.
The first I'm hearing about needing additional numbers is tonight.
Okay.
And I think that you've got to let the working group work on this.
Okay.
A little bit, and not, this is a working group, so if the zoning board wants the working group, it wants to be involved in telling the working group what to do, which is your right, you can, or if you want to let the working group have a little bit of leeway to do some work, and report back to the board, we can do it that way, it's really your call how you want this working group to operate, but.
I'm not, obviously, a part of the working group, I, I feel like, Greg, you're the point person, what, however you feel like it's best to accomplish it.
So I got a question straight out, um, this, it's, I could get an estimate for free, so, you know, the guy go out there, get a free estimate to do the infrastructure, based on the repairs that Sampson and Weston had said they wanted that-
A free estimate of cost complete?
Yeah, free cost, so they'll go out and do that, and then, but, I mean, so can Richard, you know what I mean, there's, there's companies out there that'll just come out and do that as well, I mean, I-
I think so can a potent, so can a potential developer, correct?
Correct.
You know?
So, those are the things, what I'm saying is, is if we're trying to get a cost, but what we, it, I believe we should be able to take the report that Sampson and Weston had done, and be able to get, that's open to the public for information, so we recommend that to anybody that's willing to go out there and give us a price as to the repairs.
I think up there enough too.
But I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Greg, and I would say, because you're part of the working group, is if you take that up with the working group, and decide through the working group, because I'm hearing what, what Marguerite is saying too, so if you take that to the working group, and, and say, listen, let's, we have a chance to get a free estimate, let's at least start with our estimate, if Richard doesn't like the estimate, then let him get his own estimate, and then there's two estimates, and, you know-
Well, that was the original plan, was he was to get an estimate.
Yeah, no, I know, but he hasn't done it.
I know.
So maybe the working group through you needs to say, we're going to get an estimate, and that puts Richard in the position of either you accept that estimate, or you get your own, so it goes back to what Marguerite is saying about let the working group do some preliminary work and see where it goes, I'm not opposed to that, and I, and I think that that's a good idea, but I would like the working group to be able to come back, even at our next meeting, and say, okay, we've got the estimate, but in the meantime, here's a timeline that we've worked out with Mr. Fedorov to get things accomplished, and if things don't accomplish by certain times, then this is the step that the working group will be forced to take.
Well, in our working group, we, we did discuss timeframes, and it, it sounds like Richard's got all his eggs in one basket right now, some wrongs, once that moves on, he's got a little thing, a little bit that he can start doing some additional work on our project.
Right, right.
In a nice way, that's how he said it, so, I'm just saying, whether it is on the market, it is going for sale, so then he was willing to stop working on some of the back monies he owed, once that's sold, but meanwhile, I agree with you, what you're saying, I, I mean, I could put the call out there and have a, the guys go out there and do the whole base idea what it's going to be to fix the project.
I say yes.
And then, doesn't mean that Richard has to accept it, but then again, at least we have a budget.
We, yeah.
That we can give to the monitoring agent for future sales, she'll know, okay, it's going to cost X, Y, Z roughly within this area here, based on what?
Right.
The our engineer stated.
That's why I want you-
I don't have a problem with that.
That's why I prefer that you do it, because if that's the one thing that she's waiting on, I'm, I'm taking out phase B for the point of this conversation, because we have a dollar figure, whether, how we got there, that's another discussion, but she has nothing to go by for A, so if we can give her something to go by, I think that would help, I think that would be-
So, yeah, and I want to be clear, I believe, Veronica, you do have the town's field report, right? Okay, so she does have a field report, and if a developer could take, could take our estimate, or they could get their own with that information, that's on them, what they want to do, that field report only addresses the remaining infrastructure, it doesn't necessarily address the cost to build the remaining houses, it doesn't necessarily address all the other things that need to happen, so, it's not necessarily going to be, we can't, we can't put a bottom line, it's not for the town to put a bottom line dollar number on this, it's for the town to provide information about what they believe from the town's perspective still needs to be done to be, to complete phase A, and so that's why perhaps, through the working group, we can have a conversation about, is there more information Richard needs to get for these developers to make that judgment call, or is there information that the town has in its possession that it needs to provide, or is there, is, is it really a, a good use of our resources to go get an estimate? It might not be, because these developers are going to go talk to their own.
Right.
Engineers and their own people, and get their own estimate, so, I don't know, again, this is where, we're just at this point, right now, of having the beginnings of these conversations, and I think we need to be able to continue those conversations through the working group process, and continue to report back to the town, knowing what else is still needed is helpful tonight, because that's something the working group can work on, starting, you know, the rest of this week, with Richard too, and ask him for whatever needs to happen, and I can, we're trying to do it in a way that somewhat doesn't add up additional fees, because the risk is that at the end of the day, this doesn't work out, and if it doesn't work out, then what? Now we have more costs that we've incurred to, to explore something, we're trying to find a way to do this in a cost-effective, cost-conscious way, and just see if there's interest, and if there's interest, then it really comes down to Richard and thus this developer or developer speaking with each other.
Well, I think, I think, what I, I guess two questions that I would ask, and I'll ask both of them ahead of time, to Veronica, is Veronica, is there, for the working group, from you, potentially, maybe not yet, but that could be put together, a tick list of the things that Richard needs to do from your perspective, forget about phase B, but for phase A, is there a tick list that you can provide to the working group, that you can all work with, that needs to be completed, whether it's the cost estimate, whatever it might be, so that you all know exactly what has to be done for phase A, and it's clear to everybody from the monitoring perspective, what needs to be completed to move on? The other question is, then the other question is, assuming none of this works, going back to the last thing that Marguerite was just talking about, if none of this works, and Richard decides to declare bankruptcy, which he could do tomorrow, what position does that put you in as the monitoring agent with the town in terms of what we need to do? Because it would be nice for us to know exactly from your perspective, and the state's perspective, how that affects moving forward on any part of this project, and where the responsibility lies, you know, I know the working group is doing their work, but it would be great for us to know this going, going forward as well.
Sure, so, let me just say to you, I actually have experience working with forty B development that went somewhat bankrupt, and was able to work through with the attorneys and stuff to make sure it was, you know, put back into place, so that the town didn't lose those forty B slots, and that people didn't lose their homes, so I, I know how to handle that, that is definitely not an issue, but on the other side, I was surprised to just see numbers for B and not A, what I really need are, how much is it going to cost, or at least an estimate, the way it would cost to get, you know, to build, right? So building, you've got seating, so I'll do a checklist for that, that I know that the developer's looking at, but like Marguerite said, if someone decides they want to step in and do this, they'll go out and, you know, they'll look at infrastructure, and probably have somebody else to give them a bottom line too, before they enter into any agreement, so we're not worried about that part, but I am concerned about what it's going to cost, and, and Richard, we really need this from you, because in the space of when we were talking last week, you're, you know, we were talking about somebody else kind of stepping in, taking the lead, and doing this, taking care of this, because you did say that, you know, you're ready to kind of just relax, retire, maybe, I'm not sure, but you have plans, and so, we're just trying to make sure that we're getting all the information we need, so that maybe you get to do the other things that you want to do, I don't know, you know, what else, but I just know we need numbers, because I can't get anyone to talk with me about anything, and I don't even want to talk about B, without knowing what's happening with the housing for A, the housing for grounds, just, you know, all that.
So, I mean, our, our next meeting, as I said, is the twenty eighth, I would just, I'm assuming you guys are probably getting a working session before then?
Well, they, we'll either have a working session meeting, or we'll have communications and phone calls in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, I still mean a legit, actual, per se, working session, per se, but, okay. Carrie, do we have anything on, on our agenda yet for the October?
Uh, yes, I have one public hearing.
Okay, so I guess if it starts to get to full cutoff, because I don't, at this point, it's going to be kind of short notice to probably have like a special meeting, just to go over this.
Yeah.
So, and if you want to allow maybe one more, if, if we get it, but-
It'd be too late for them to submit now.
Okay, so then, okay, so then we'll just keep it to this and that, on, so, we won't, I, I'm just, the reason why I asked about, if they can have a working session, or communicate before then, was I was in my mind thinking, are we going to have to have a special meeting to go over this, if October was too full, so, okay.
I think so.
Okay. All right.
Just to share really quickly, I just want to share with you all, so, one of the developers I spoke with today is actually doing a project now, but they, if you would like to get some information from the ladies, from Richard, and I'll send out an email to the working group tomorrow, just as a reminder, Richard, more for you, of just what we need, so that we can keep moving forward, I think it's, I think it's great that you have some people who, they, who think they want to do it, that have the expertise, it'd be great for the town as well, and for all the people who need to buy in, right? So we just really need to do that, and I do have people who are looking forward to getting their information.
Okay, all right.
And they've already been out to Dayton, so.
I was, I was, I was going to ask you that, if anyone's seen it yet, Marguerite, do you have anything else?
No, I think this is very helpful, and I'll be in- No, I think this is very helpful and I'll be in touch also with Veronica and Richard and Greg and Carrie about it.
All right. Sounds good. Anyone for Stonegate Landing may, uh, accept the call if they wish. We have one more agi, uh, item agenda.
Thank you.
To.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, 40B committee, uh, discuss and determine zoning board of appeals, 40B committee representative. So from my understanding, we're looking to get, not we, but the town is looking to get that committee up and going, and they require a board member, a representative from our board to be, uh, liaison, so to speak, of that board.
So, um, I'll interject here if it's okay with you.
Yep, yep.
Um, I think you all know that this is something that's been a, a project on my mind for a long time. Um, and I think that the 40B process is something that we need to really be involved in in the town, we need to look at, we need to work with developers to bring 40B development into town in the right manner that's, that's conducive to our environment in the town, um, small projects potentially, things like that. We did have a 40B working committee, your dad was in fact involved in it, um, way back, the last time we met was, I want to say 2019, 2000, early 2020.
Oh, okay.
After we completed the Serpide report.
Oh, wow, okay.
But the committee itself was never formally disbanded.
Oh, I remember that now, yep.
And what happened was the person who was the chair at the time chose to never call any more meetings. That person made it very clear, they didn't agree with 40B projects, they didn't agree with the concept of 40B, and they chose not to call any more meetings. We've tried over the years to get them to call more meetings, they've chosen not to.
Okay.
In the conversations that I've had with, um, two folks, actually, one is with, uh, our town administrator, we've talked about the, the need to reestablish the 40B committee, um, to reconstitute it, and also to work with Serpide, as you may or may not know, Serpide is in the process of just did a town survey. And that survey is part of putting together the report that the state requires to determine the need for affordable housing in our town. And we're going backwards, we're not going forwards. So we have to have a 10th precise threshold, we're actually down to the low fours, maybe even the, the high threes at this point.
That's my guess, yeah.
And, um, at the same time, as you all know, I think, and I've talked about this in the past, I've worked with Veronica on other things as well, and I've worked with DCHD and HUD on other 40B projects over the years. And I'm saying that because I think it's really important for us to have a working committee and to be able to work on behalf of, of the board, the zoning board of appeals, to report back, to, to share information, to bring together the, the, the whole 40B process, because it really is under the purview of the 40B committee. The question that I think, um, the town administrator had was whether it's, it should be through the board of selectmen or a standalone, or where, where it would lie. Before, it was a standalone.
Oh, okay.
Committee.
Yep.
And now the town administrator is feeling that it should come under the purview as a subcommittee of the ZBA. So that's some background about it.
What, how would you envision that working?
How I envision, how I would see envision it working is, first of all, it's, it's, it's a combination of working with Serpide, um, and identifying parcels of land, ident, working, uh, working on the five-year plans that have to be updated every five years, which is now overdue. That's the one that they're working right now, it's called the Housing Production Plan. Um, right now, there's nobody in town working on the Housing Production Plan, except the people from Serpide, because that's part of what they do, you know, for the town.
Right, right.
But the, but the 40B committee last time was probably, oh gosh, we probably put 40 to 50 hours into it, because it really needs town, town, you need, you need town input into every aspect of the plan. It's not just the number of houses.
When you say subcommittee, would they report to us or are we also the?
They would, they would be reporting to you.
Okay.
Or reporting to, you know, I'll say you as, as the chair, but I really mean the committee.
Yep.
Yes, and really doing separate work, but reporting. And I think when there are final decisions to be made, they would bring the recommendations back with the report, this is what we're doing, this is why, this is, this is the housing report, this is the study, this is, we'd like to meet with these developers, um, we're, we're working, you know, it's a combination of, for example, it's even working with the planning board and with open space to identify places of parcels of land, for example, where you can put projects.
Are they liaisons from all those boards on 40B?
There were not before, there should be. There should be liaison, you'd want a liaison from the, probably the planning committee.
Yep.
The, the 40B, uh, committee should have a chair, whoever that might be, um, or a temporary chair. You might want to have, um, other, other, others on it as well, you may want to have somebody from, um, uh, CONCOM on it as well.
Yeah, open space maybe.
Potentially, potentially somebody from open space, you know, and you're going to get some people on the 40B committee, um, if you're doing it fairly, who are probably not for 40B housing.
Right, ideal, I think you want that, yeah.
And, you know, if you're doing it fairly, we had five members on it before.
Okay, I was going to ask you that question next.
Yeah, we did, we did have five members.
Are we close to getting that now?
I'm sorry?
Are we close to getting that now?
We, right now, as far as I know, the only one who we, we have potentially formally would be me. So what I would, what I would ask, um, is that it's voted to reconstitute the 40B committee and bring it, but in order to determine anything else, what I would like to do is have a vote that at least lets me reach out to the former committee members and see if they even still want to be on it.
Um.
Because we don't know.
Yeah.
They're formally, it was never formally disbanded.
Uh, I'm, I'm certainly fine with that. I think Greg and maybe, and Carrie, if, I think it might be wise first to get exactly what the town administrator was looking for in writing. I don't want to make a motion without, I mean, I, I don't want to make the motion incorrectly and have it be, oh, that's not quite what I was looking for, or you should have said it this way. Uh, I just wouldn't want to have to double back or do anything incorrectly. Um, I'm certainly all for doing it, um, because I, I, last, you know, that, that's a piece that we have this time that we didn't have last time, was the town, was the town administrator suggesting a subcommittee. I'm not opposed to it at, at all.
Yes, yeah.
I, I don't want to make it sound like that I am or I want him to pitch it to us. I, I do not want that, I trust him. I just want, I just don't want to make it, you know, have, I don't want to word it incorrectly or say, well, that's not quite what I, how I envisioned it, so.
Carrie, do you have any insight at all in conversations you've had with it here?
I do not, I do not. The only thing that, uh, the town administrator asked me was just, you know, if the board would want to, like, like you said, it wasn't disbanded, but, I mean.
Yeah, so it's.
React, yeah, right.
React, reactivate it and has.
He, he does not have to come to our meeting, if you can just get something from him in writing for our next meeting, uh, just e- exactly how he, or, or I could, you know, mute him if he wants, I don't feel, I don't feel the need to mute him, if he wants to, I certainly can.
Okay.
Um, but just, you know, because like the whole subcommittee aspect is different here than what it was last time, again, not opposed to it, but I just want to know how he envisions it.
Exactly.
So subcommittee, how's this funded? Is this funded to the ZBA?
The Z, okay, so the last time when the four committee was, was a working committee, we had a zero budget. The only thing that we did have at the time was the person who was, I, what was her name? Um, before you, Carrie.
Uh, Nicole.
Nicole, thank you. Nicole Silison, yeah, Nicole, Nicole.
Oh, wow, that long, okay.
Nicole would, was, would, would be given, I wouldn't say six hours a month or something like that, to do the meetings in the minutes.
That's something that they would have to know about.
So that would be part of it, is that if we met.
Who's going to be your secretary?
Uh, I.
If this is a committee, because didn't this come across last time?
If, if we're going about it this time, about last time, it, it cannot come out of our office manager.
I'm not opposed to this, I think it's a great idea, but at the end of the day, I remember these little conversations coming out of the day, we're trying to put so many hours of, uh.
And it was about your, your uncle was chair.
There was, there was, and there was a, there was a question as to how much time Nicole was going to be allocated and how it was going to be done.
I just don't want that to fall back and slow it down.
No.
And that was also before we merged the planning and board, uh, planning and zoning secretary, office manager.
That is, that is correct.
Which it made more sense before, even though I felt like it could have gone, gone about it differently, but it made more sense then, but it's, I mean, Carrie, you're nearly 40 out, I mean, right?
No, that, that.
I'm maxed out.
That is correct, and I.
So you couldn't do it even right?
No, no.
I, I agree with this, I think this is a great idea, especially with what we're having happening right now and working on development and things of this nature, I agree that this should be taken care of, but I don't want to see, like, I remember last time, it was like we had, it was so much coming out of the secretary, so much for someone to travel and they were putting in their expenses and using our office personnel.
Yeah, yep.
So, and, you know.
The other side of it, if I can just real quick, Zach, is that I think the, the other part of the 40B process is that the state, not just Veronica, but the state is looking to have a committee that they can work with in the town. They want a committee they can go to when they have questions or problems or issues.
Yeah, we should absolutely have it, it just, I just can't be funded out of this zoning party.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, I think, my personal opinion is that I think the, for the first six months or a year of, of a ZBA, it's going to be getting the, if you, if you have a 40B committee and getting up to speed again and educating people and everything, I personally don't think for the first six months or a year, it even requires a formal secretary. Um, you're taking minutes, you can use Zoom, you have AI with Zoom for minutes.
And so thi- this is what I was, was wondering if we're going, if this was going to come up, and that's why I wanted to talk to Ralph, because then we're talking about posting a position, and then it's like, do they report to, do they report to me? Do they, if we're a subcommittee, that's why the whole subcommittee thing, I want to get that cleared up, because I'm not saying I'm, I don't want this, I just don't, like, if they're reporting to me, does that mean I, I, we as a board are hiring this person? Um, I guess I didn't know wh- why a subcommittee as opposed to the way it was before, I'm not saying that, you know, it needs to be changed to the way it was before.
Yeah.
But, um.
They did, they.
Make sure he puts it in writing as well.
Yes, and I, I would say especially highlight that aspect of it, because.
The 40B committee.
I'm not going to pull the selectmen asking for more, for more money for a committee that we don't, unless, that's what Ralph wants, and he says, no, this is going to be part of zoning, and he says that we as a board have to allocate that, that line item in the budget for, uh, uh, but from what I understand is, take the historical commission for example, the clerk of the historical commission does the secretary work. That's what happens when you don't have a budget. So if Ralph says, no, we're operating the same way, we're not going to have a budget, that's going to be for the 40B to, uh, 40B committee to determine how they want to organize that. If he says, no, we'll have to have, have a line item, then that's a whole different discussion that I'm willing to have, I just want to know what, how he envisions that. So we can put that on, definitely put that on the, uh, agenda for next, um, next meeting, assuming, I, I'm assuming we'll have something from them by then.
Yeah.
About it. Um, so, and then when, yeah, because like when that time comes, like, like, I know when we, it's a little bit different, but when we formed the Americas 250th Committee, like, we, uh, the historical commission appointed one of our members to be a liaison for that. I don't remember if that's how we operated for this last time, like, did we appoint John? I don't remember exa, I, well, I wasn't even chair, I wasn't even chair, so I don't really know exactly how that.
If, if, if it's a subcommittee.
Yep.
And then you wouldn't be appointing a liaison, you would be, you would be a subcommittee and you would be appointing somebody to be the acting chair to put it together.
I see.
And then the subcommittee would go.
Okay, okay, right, okay, okay.
If it's a liaison, it would be a standalone separate from.
Right.
Or under the purview of another, let's say, planning board.
Right, and that's why, another question too, like, I mean, for like, as far as I know, the selectmen are the ones that appoint, and not appoint chairs, because obviously, but like, ha, ha, co, co, thank you, appointments.
Yes.
So if that's something that, do subcommittees not need to do that hurdle? I, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't, do we have any other quote, quote, subcommittees in town?
Subcommittees do not in anything need to be, for any of the town standing committees, the subcommittees can be set up by the committee, they do not need to be approved by the board of selectmen.
Okay.
At all.
Okay.
But, you know, if they're a standalone, if they're, you know, if they're a, a set, for example, disability commission is a standalone, but it's not a formal committee required by the town bylaws, in that respect.
Right.
We have our bylaws, but it's not required in the town bylaw. So, you know, the, the board of selectmen has nothing to do with anything of that.
I see.
In that respect.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's not something, if it's a subcommittee of the ZBA, then the ZBA appoints a temporary chair to, um, put it together, and then from there, they go ahead and, once it's put together, elect a chair and a secretary. And really, all they need is a chair and a secretary slash clerk.
Okay.
Because they don't, they're not involved in any money, they don't need a treasurer, they don't need any of those things.
Right, okay. Okay.
And that's what we had last time, just the secretary and the, and the, the chair.
Right. All right, chorus, Veronica, do you have anything else or are you just hanging out?
No, who knows, listening, and I'm really happy that you are going to be established in 40B working group. I do remember meeting Jonathan Gale, and, um, you know, he was talking about, uh, you